Radio Free Santa Clarita presents. The Talk of Santa Clarita. A podcast about issues involving Santa Clarita and the surrounding valley. With your host, Stephen Daniels. Episode 154. Candidate for the Santa Clarita City Council, Dr. Akash Ahuja. And now, let's see what the Talk of Santa Clarita is.
And remember, this is for posterity, so be honest.
Dr. Akash, welcome to the Talk of Santa Clarita, and our socially-distanced outdoors show.
Yes.
Uh, is it, is it, uh, your, Akash is your first name, correct?
That is correct.
And what is your last name exactly? How do you pronounce it?
Ahuja.
Ahuja?
Perfect.
I said it right?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay, that's good, because I have trouble saying Carlos, you know, sometimes with that accent stuff. Uh, I can tell, you have an accent.
I do.
So you're not, you're not from around here, are you?
No.
Where are you from originally?
North Korea. Just kidding.
No, just kidding. I actually took a step back there for a moment, so.
From India. Born and brought up.
Born and brought up. What brought you to the United States?
Uh, to, uh, do my M.D. in psychiatry.
How did you end up in Santa Clarita? I mean, as, I mean, as opposed to Los Angeles, or New York, or, you know, Austin? You know, what is it about Santa Clarita that brought you here?
Um, so I finished my residency, uh, residency's M.D. in Minneapolis. And, uh, that was on June 30th, 2007.
Okay.
And literally, the next day, 10 o'clock in the morning, I took a flight to San Luis Obispo. Uh, Central Coast, because it was a great job. I liked the setting. Uh, for the first time in my life, I had seen the mountains and the ocean side by side. So that was one of the reasons, and of course, so moved to San Luis Obispo. Did great. Life was fantastic. Uh, but the diversity was very much on the lower side. Uh, when we celebrated the birthday of our first son, uh, we had about sixty-odd guests.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, none of them was, for the lack of better word, none of them was of a person of color.
All white, is what you're saying?
And, uh, and we said, "Oh, there's something different here." So we, we thought, you know, that to give, uh, a good education in every sphere.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to move to a bigger city. And that's when, actually, we moved down to LA.
Yeah.
Uh, we were in Venice for a couple of years.
Okay.
But the distance from my job in Lancaster was slightly more.
Yeah.
So we basically just sat down and decided that, okay, where should we move?
Yeah.
Uh, closer to Lancaster, where we have good school district and all that. And basically, Santa Clarita fit the bill. We didn't have any friends at that time in Santa Clarita, none at all.
Yeah.
And that's how we end up in Santa Clarita. And that was in 2014.
You basically left a white community to come to another big white community. But, so you've lived here for, what, ten years? Is that about, about right, or?
In Santa Clarita, 2014, so six years.
Six years, six years, okay. How many kids you have?
Uh, two kids.
Two kids? How old are they?
Uh, my boy, Akash Junior, he's ten years old. My daughter, Akashi, she's eight years old.
Eight years old, oh, okay, nice, nice ages to have. Um, and you, you work in Lancaster? Do you have your own practice, or are you, I think I read that you work at a prison?
Yes, yes.
What do you, I mean, do you like deal out the meds for the, uh, for the prisoners that are, have mental issues, I guess? I assume that's what you do?
Your guess is absolutely right, yes. I, I'm a psychiatrist there, and I, uh, treat the patients who are, who are prisoners.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, that is, that is what I do.
Do you, um, I, I can't help but imagine, you know, you're a psychiatrist for prisoners. So what goes through my mind is, have you ever met a Hannibal Lecter kind of character? You know, I mean, like a really dangerous individual that scared you to actually talk to?
Not to that extent. I've seen the movie. I mean, of course, you know, Hollywood makes it very, very dramatic. So not to an extent where people are, that somebody is eating, uh, like somebody is a cannibal, that way.
Yeah.
But I have met people who have, uh, who have committed a lot of crimes, a lot of murders. Uh, the crimes which are unimaginable, the crimes which will, which will make us kind of, uh, cringe.
Hmm.
Uh, people who are serving the sentence of about eleven hundred years.
Hmm.
Uh, so yes, uh, but, you know, slowly and steadily, like any other job, you kind of, uh, you kind of form a system. And if, uh, and if you are somewhat good to begin with.
Yeah.
Then I think, uh, you built on that, and you feel more and more comfortable. But every single day, I am cautious about it. I never take things for granted in the prison, and that's the key. And that's how things go in a smoother direction.
Do you, um, as somebody who deals with some of the criminals that you deal with, well, convict, I should, I don't know. What, what would be the incarcerated people, I guess, is the, are the prisoners? Um, I don't know what's the PC term for it, but, uh, uh, how do you feel about criminal justice reform in general? I mean, do you feel that, uh, mo, that the system is unfair right now? Or do you feel that most people that are serving their time are, you know, deserving of the crime, you know, the time for the crime? Or, uh, I mean, is there something, I mean, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I'm just curious if, you know, for the perspective of your job.
Right. As you said, uh, you don't want to spend too much into that, but, but I think it's a very valid issue. I think it's an important issue, and I think we, we do need it. Uh, I don't generally, uh, you know, go into like, okay, what was the reason? Uh, or what kind of sentence they got? I mean, we, we know it. But, uh, but yes, if you look at, if you look at the objective data, then yes, there are many, many places, many communities in which for the similar crime, a person of color does get arrested more. A person of color does get, uh, more years.
Hmm.
Uh, and it also, and mish, and mesh with the socioeconomic status also. Uh, I would say that, you know, even in person of colors, the person who has more money, sometimes get better lawyers, better services, and they, they get better representation, I'll put it this way. But definitely, uh, there are disparities.
Hmm, okay. Um, so you're running for city council?
Yes.
Um, why?
That's a million-dollar question, right?
Yeah, yeah, why, why are you running specifically?
I genuinely believe that our city can become much better. I genuinely became, uh, believe that our city can become number one in California. It requires new set of eyes, new set of visions. It requires a leader who is more solution-oriented, more logical, and has the capacity to bring people together. Uh, there are many ideas which I have, along with the policies. And I do believe that I am a kind of person who can bridge the gap. And I, I'm a kind of person who can apply logic and science and take the city to a much better level where we are right now.
Is the city in a bad place right now, you think?
I think, in, if you look at in last few months, look, I would never say, and I think that's, um, that's one thing I'm proud of. I will never say like few people that our city is the greatest. Whatever is happening is fantastic, let's keep it that way.
Hmm.
And I will, and also, I would never say that, "Oh, our city is totally in ruckus. Things are totally bad, and we need to totally overhaul it." I think the current city council has done some good points. That is the reason people have moved here.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I think that now the vision is becoming kind of antiquated. And our city is not in a disastrous mode, but, but in last few months, if you notice, based upon the coronavirus situation, which has impacted the whole world. But also on, based upon the, the protests and the racial divide, and, uh, lots of, uh, lots of issues have come up. Uh, I think which is, which has divided the society to a larger degree. At least, it has come up on the surface now.
Yeah.
So I think, yes, the city has not been doing very well in the last six months or so.
So give me an example of what they handled poorly.
Few things. Uh, I think they could have done a much better job when the protests happened in the city.
Okay.
Um, I do believe that as a leader of the city, as a leader's, the city council could have taken a more unbiased approach.
Okay.
Uh, I think a lot of people, this is, this is where my perception comes in. I'm not a seasoned politician.
Yeah.
But I look at the things, uh, from a doctor's point of view, from an objective point of view. I think they, they could have, they could have listened to, they, they could have listened to the protesters. They could have sat with them before the protests and not after, when people started saying that, "Look, the council is not listening to us." And then it seemed like more of a photo-opportunity kind of situation that, okay, let's call this group, and let's call this group.
It, it did strike me as, I mean, when they were talking about the protests, uh, uh, Bill Miranda, Councilman Bill Miranda, said, "Well, I was gonna get out of the car to talk to him, but I was offended by some of the things they were saying." And I thought, "Well, that's your job, isn't it?"
That was actually, that was, I think, uh, in my opinion, and I respect Bill Miranda. I've met him once.
Yeah.
I think that was an opportunity missed.
Yeah.
I think, uh.
I agree with you. I mean, it, it's a situation where the point is to engage people, whether they agree with you or not. As a politician and as a, as a, as a councilperson, that's your job to get up there and talk to somebody you might not agree with.
Yeah. And he has a calm demeanor. He, he has the personality, uh, that, you know.
Friend of the show, by the way, friend of the show, so.
He, he could have, in my opinion, uh, did a better job. I think he catered to the other council members, or he also catered to some, some base voters. And I, in my opinion, uh, that was an opportunity missed. It could have handled in a much better way.
So you wouldn't have called in the National Guard?
No, I won't have. I won't have. I would have definitely talked to it. At the same time, I do believe that as a city council member, it is my responsibility to keep the city safe, no matter what happens.
Sure.
But I think when, when people sit on the table, like we are sitting right now, you know, having a cup of coffee or not.
Yeah.
Usually, people come up with good solutions.
Yeah.
But if you shun people away, and thinking that, you know, they will just, they will just go away. In this day and age, I think things will not go in the right direction. And the city cannot progress to its potential best if you are alienating half of the city. You cannot do that.
Okay, well, the, um, what, I mean, I think a lot of people would argue that, you know, Santa Clarita has a low crime rate. Uh, fiscally responsible.
Hmm.
Um, that it, that, you know, the parks are, you know, the one we're sitting in now, you know, just beautiful.
Hmm.
Uh, that it's well-managed. Um, you know, I mean, what, beyond this situation with the protests, is there something about that they've done that you disagree with, that, you know, you would, they could have done better? Or there, there's something that they needed to do?
Yeah.
Like, what, what example? Give me an example.
Right, right. So again, I, I won't go, you know, way beyond, and I won't go like, "Ten years ago, this happened or that happened." But if we look at the last, again, six, seven months, I think the response to COVID-19 also could have been much better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what could they have done?
Yes, sure. Okay. So, you know, coming from one side of the aisle, the city council members. I mean, you, look, usually the narrative is that the Republican candidates, or Republican people, are very small-business friendly. And they are very friendly towards the, towards the vets, and, uh, and, you know, they are, there is a certain prototype. That if you're a Democrat, you're this way. You're a Republican, you're this way. I firmly do not agree with that. Now, coming to your question, what they could have done differently? They, they all talk about, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, and everybody, they talk about that, you know, we are pro-business friendly, and, you know, let's keep the businesses open, and this, and that. But they missed the point. In my opinion, the city, the community, the country, actually, could have done a much better. And I'm using the word "country" because it all kind of percolates.
Hmm.
If they would have taken the COVID-19 seriously, if they would have, if the message would have been that, you know what? Right now, our best defense, or our best attack, is to maintain the social distancing and to wear the mask. I think it could have saved the life of people. It would have saved the economy. I think the businesses would have been in a much better shape if the message was loud and clear. Not kind of wishy-washy that, "Look, we don't want to do that, but the LA city is saying it, so let's do it." It's kind of like you are almost apologizing that, "Hey, I have to, I have to say that, please, wear the mask." It was not a clear, good message, and I think that lacked, there was a lack of vision, and I think.
Even now, not to catch off, but the city council will have their meetings, and only Cameron Smythe is the one that has a mask on.
Right, right. I mean, at least, at least that's nice, and I'll, I'll give him credit for that. But I think that as a unison, they could have done, they could have done a much better job.
Yeah.
Also, now, looking forward, look, it's always, the people always say, "Hey, you know, Dr. Akash, you are saying it because retrospectively this happened." But what is going forward? Going forward also, I think now that the vaccines are going to come in next two or three months. I think people, people should be proactive. Not that, you know, when the vaccines come, then there is a hustle and bustle, "Okay, what are we going to do? What is our message?" There is, there should be a plan that right now, when the vaccines hit, how are we going to procuring it? How are we going to go about distributing it? Who gets it? Are we sending the right message? Forty percent of the people, in my opinion, do not want to get vaccine. Usually, thirty percent with COVID situation, people would not get the vaccine. If we do not build the herd immunity, it's not going to help people anyway. So the point is, the, if, if the message, togetherness with objective data, with scientific data. Get a doctor, get somebody who knows the stuff, you know, stand in solidarity, and then give the message to your folks also. Then I think that the city in unison will do much better.
Do you think the schools should be open right now?
No.
No? I agree with you on that.
So short answer is no. Look, I have children, I told you, eight and ten-year-old. For me.
I have a nine-year-old, too.
Nine-year-old, right. It would be a great benefit if the schools open, but not at this cost.
Hmm.
There are so many, just opening the schools, because again, you are catering to one particular strand of voters, is not going to be the right solution. People might feel happy. People will say things like that, "You know what? We are not scared of COVID-19, and you guys are scared. And if you don't want to send your kids, don't send." Yeah, these are all good talking points, but if you look again at the data, what happens? If you look at the schools which have opened, one kid gets sick, then there is a whole chaos, then the whole school gets shut down, and this and that. If you really want to counter this whole thing.
Yeah.
Do it right the first time, so that we can get back to work quickly.
It seems like, uh, the whole concept of, uh, opening, reopening the economy, just like we just did it too quickly, too soon. I mean, do you agree with that, or?
I do, I do.
Well, I mean, what would you do to, to help, uh, small businesses in this area, particularly for the COVID situation? And what, would you offer grants, uh, financial assistance of some sort, or, uh, you know, I mean, they're, particularly the local restaurants, you know, are struggling, uh, in particular, except for takeout or delivery. Um, what would you do about that?
Stephen, look, I feel blessed that at least, you know, in my situation, my job is secure, and many other people who are working, they're secure.
Yeah.
It, it hurts me. I have many friends, and even if there were not many friends, I do believe that small business is the pulse of Santa Clarita. I've always said that I maintain it. They need to be helped. Okay. Now, what can we do? All right. First of all, as I said, that if we do the things correctly, then hopefully the businesses will open soon. But till that time, I think they should be incentivized in terms of, okay. So, I like the idea that when the city said that, "Okay, you know what? You guys can eat outside, in outside places." I think that was an innovative idea. That was a good idea. There should be more innovative ideas like that, and they, I think, they missed that, and it also came.
I'm sorry, are you expecting something innovative from our city council?
I do, I do. I, I genuinely believe that, you know, the people who are sitting there for twenty-odd years should know the know-how, should be in touch with so many good people.
Should!
Yes. And, and yes, I'm expecting that they should be innovative. If not, then I think, then it's time for change.
Yeah.
In some cities, what they have done is, and I think it can fit in Santa Clarita also. Let's say you and me, you know, we go to a restaurant, not me and you, let's say your family goes to a restaurant. You know, you should be get, you should get like, uh, like a twenty-five percent voucher.
Hmm.
So, the, the, the restaurant owner is getting the whole money, but he is getting about twenty-five percent from the city. Or, or you're paying the full thing, but then the city is incentivizing you with twenty-five percent. That you can use only in the small, local places, not only in the restaurant, but other places. You cannot use that in Costco. You cannot, nothing against Costco. You cannot use it in the big chain. They have a bigger balance. They can sustain this for a longer time. But if you incentivize that, okay, if you shop locally, if you go with the local car wash, if you go with local this, then I think it can help a little. Another thing which can help the small business community, I think we are pathetic in terms of our, uh, our internet. I think we are one of the, uh, the slowest cities around in California and in the country, and I think that can be fixed.
So, uh, you are thinking in terms of what, what I think was Chattanooga, Tennessee, has that, uh.
Yes.
Uh, local utility, uh, internet themselves?
That, that would be, that would be one approach, yes. That would be an ideal approach, because they are paying less money, and they are getting a very fast service also. But at the same time, many cities, again, even in LA County, you know, they have the Google dark fibers and those things.
Yeah.
That, again, if you generate, if you get more people, uh, more vendors, then the service will definitely improve. With the competition, the rate will go down, and the people will benefit. And again, I think these are simple, common-sense ideas.
I, I, it's my understanding that, I mean, we're already wired for, uh, high speed, I mean, super-high speed, or whatever. And like, the city already wired, uh, like, for, for possible future use. It's my understanding, at least.
Well, I don't know, how, how future, how futuristic are we, like, talking about?
I, I, you know, I don't know, I just, uh, well, let's go, let's go back to the idea of the small business stuff. And the, I guess, the stipend that you're talking about, or the coupon, or whatever it would be.
Yes.
How far, fiscally, are you willing to go with that? I mean, you, you do run the risk of, I mean, what we.
True.
They have a large reserves right now. I mean, I, one of my biggest beefs with the city council is they have a lot of money in reserves. But they, and they, they seem so frugal with their cash.
They were not so frugal with the ice rink.
Yeah, yeah. Did you support that?
Forty-five million dollars. Look, any business save is a good thing.
Hmm.
But if you look at, if I, if I look at as an owner of the ice rink, as a person whose children go to the ice rink, and, you know, I like it. But if I look strictly, very objectively, look, if we are, when, if we are buying one business, then why are we not buying the other struggling businesses also?
So would you have voted yes or no on that?
I would have voted no.
No.
I would have said my reasons, that it's nothing against them. I would love that our city, city has that. But at this particular time, I would have said no. Because right now, that fourteen-five, fourteen-point-five million dollars could have been used in some other ways to help one thousand businesses rather than helping one business.
Okay. Well, I mean, fiscally, though, would you go in the red to help support the small businesses in this area? I mean.
Look, it's a, it's a tough call. When you say in the red, then it, then in, then it adds a lot of, um, a lot of negative, uh, intonation to it. But I would do whatever is possible with an innovation, with involving the community leaders. There are a lot of good, rich people in the city. I would seek their help. I would like to keep physical pe, the city fiscally healthy. But at the same time, uh, I would, I would, I would put my own money, uh, to, to help the small businesses. And I have said that, that, that as a city council member, I will not take any salary. I will donate it to the local charities. So I will try to keep the city not in red, but at the same time, I would like to help them to whatever maximum extent I can. Again, trying to take the middle path.
Okay. Um, whoops, someone's trying to call me. Uh, I should put the, I think it's my next podcast trying to tell me, they're gonna be late.
Sure.
Uh, um, you talked about bringing things together.
Yes.
Um, uh, and I'm just, what do you mean by that? Give me an idea of what that looks like. You know, bringing the, the city better, uh, together and things.
Have you been on some Facebook groups, uh, which has twenty thousand people, twenty-five thousand people?
Sure, yeah.
Look at one simple comment made by a person who is a Republican.
Hmm.
Then a lot of people who are not Republicans will say not very good things, and vice versa. If a Democrat puts something, or a kind of a democratic idea, then there's a lot of bashing on the Facebook. Again, can we fix that? No. But the idea is, the city is divided.
Right.
The city.
And the whole country is.
The whole country is. What it looks like? Look, being a doctor, that helps me, actually. That puts me, in my opinion, in a very unique situation. We are trained to look at things the same. If anybody comes in, "Hey, I work in the prison," right?
Yeah.
So, I deal with people who sometimes, a lot of people in the community, both from left and right, will not be willing to talk to.
Hmm.
Okay? And, and the patients, in my opinion, they like me, they respect me, and I respect them back as a person, you know? So I think, uh, a united city will look like that people will be able to talk to each other in a meaningful manner. They can discuss their differences. They can different, they can bring their, those differences to the council. There should be like a forum where people representing, representing different religions, different races, from all spheres of the community. Doctors, engineers, good people from all spheres, homeless person are on the council. Because when, when the, when you have a very small slice of people making decisions for the whole city of three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It becomes very different. Maybe they are not having the, maybe they don't want to do bad for the people, but they don't have an idea how an African-American person, or how a Latino person, how an Asian person, how a doctor, how an engineer, how a vendor, how a radio show host is facing the problems in the city. And I think our, our city council is very, uh, very similar-ish, it seems like, in many ways, so.
In the sense that they've all been there pretty much forever?
Yes. And I think, and I think what that does is, it also kills the innovation in, in some ways. Uh, people are not that motivated that, you know, it's our job to make our city great, and this and that. It becomes kind of a status quo. So, to have a great city, you need to have a city which is united. And, again, sometimes if an, and I, I'll be very open with you, you seem like a very open-styled. If an African-American comes and says sudden things, then some people will think that, you know what? This guy is biased because he's bringing his whole, his whole.
Cultural history, yeah.
Cultural history in it. And if, if, if a white guy sometimes says that, then people from the other side, even if he might be right, he or she might be right, might think that, you know what, they don't understand us, and this and that. My, being an Indian actually puts me in a situation where I'm neither this way or that way, in that way.
Yeah.
So I think it, it does, um, it does give me an advantage that I genuinely, being logical, can listen to both sides and bring people together, bring them on the table. I genuinely believe that we'll do much better than what we are doing right now. Good decisions can be made, physically better decisions can be made. When you do not like the, the way city is doing, the pendulum always swings from one side or the other. In my opinion, we, we have to keep the pendulum in the middle.
Okay. Um, this is gonna be, no, it's, it's good. I'm, I'm just, uh, uh, this is gonna be a recurring thing. I'm gonna bring up, uh, Bob Keller at least tw, two more times here. But let's do this first. Let's, I, I just, flat out, is Bob Keller a racist?
He made a racial comment. I have met him once for, in Sacramento, last year.
Yeah.
I have never talked to him. It's a big, it's a big thing to say, so I would not say that out of respect. But what he said was a racist thing. The way, but that is not the thing which bothered me, bothered me that much. The thing which bothered me more was his response to, to when people were protesting. I think the way he handled that, in my opinion, was not correct.
There seems to be a certain kind of arrogance to the tone there.
There was arrogance. He, in my opinion, he, uh, looking at a psychiatrist also, it looks like that he knows that, "Look, I have, uh, I have a protective layer around me. I have my own base, and whatever I do, I will, I will not say that what I said was, was a mistake, was a wrong thing to say, and I repent it." Uh, in my opinion, he could, and, and maybe he does, but he, he should have, he should not have that chip on the shoulder, and he, he could have said that. Um, I will, I will leave it there.
Well, let's, I wanna, I wanna move into a little bit of kind of what I see an issue with the city council. Based on, we, we talked, we just talked about the arrogance, the tone there. Uh, were you living out here when the digital billboard issue was happening with the city council?
No.
No, okay.
No.
How do you feel about digital billboards?
I, I.
Um, no, the, a lot of that was, let's say you're on the city council.
Yes.
Okay, and the, the issue with the, the digital billboards now, and like, I, I think it's like six years later. Uh, it's, it seems like such a small, trivial thing. But, uh, you know, it, it got the whole town in a big hoopla, uh, you know, about, about the idea of installing digital billboards. Uh, just three of them, uh, in the town. And, and I was one of the people that was actively participating in protest to it.
Sure.
But for me, it wasn't so much about the damn billboards. It was, it was based on the arrogance of the city council. Because they had about two hundred and something people come in and say, "We don't want these. We don't want these." And the city council went and did it anyway.
Yes.
And then the, you know, it went into a measure S and a vote and everything like that. Um, what, what would have been your reaction if two hundred people showed up? I mean, if Frank Ferry, who was on the council at the time, said, you know, that, that there's that silent majority, that, you know, that, that the people that show up are pretty much, you know, just the loud wackos. And not, I'm paraphrasing, obviously, but, but I mean, what, what is your belief of, of that, that kind of tone?
I, I, I would one hundred percent say that whether it's the issue of the billboard, or whether it's the issue of anything.
Hmm.
If two hundred people are showing up, you need to take them seriously.
Yeah.
It can be an issue where I am passionately in favor of it, or it can be an issue where I am passionately against it. I need to keep my, my personal beliefs on the side, and I am, if city is choosing me to be the city council member, then you are serving them. Then you are accountable to them.
Right.
Then you have to be transparent to them. I would have listened to them. Again, you got to have people, you got to send a message loud and clear, in a genuine manner, that you care about the city. You cannot send a message that, "Look, I am Akash, or I am Steve, or I am Bob Keller, and I know more than you."
Yeah.
You, you got to listen to them, and then, methodically, logically, objectively, make the decision. Sometimes your decisions will agree with them, sometimes it won't. But if there is a pattern that whatever happens, the city, and right now, that is, I think, one of the major problems. The people are upset because they, somehow, there is such a, such a pessimism in people when I talk to hundreds of them.
Hmm.
That they think that whatever they do, however logical they can be, if the city council decides that they are going to go this way, then they will go this way, no matter what. And you know what? When you take all the decisions on one side. And you know what? When you take all the decisions on one side. Even if you might be right, you lose credibility, you lose the trust of the people. And then people, when people do not trust in the city council, I think overall the morale goes down. And when the morale goes down, then people cannot achieve their best. And then, and also people will not be able to say, you know what, I'm going to do this not only for myself, but for the community. And then that leads to more divide. It's a long answer, but I think I, I made my point. That you got to listen to people in a genuine manner.
So your answer would have been no to the.
Yes, thank you.
Do you think, um, well, you, one of the things on your platform here was you talked about, um. Sustainability, uh, are you talking about incentives for green uh buildings? I mean, more sustainable.
My, my, yes, but the, but the word I use sustainable was more in terms of economics. In terms of that, I think Santa Clarita, in my opinion, many people I know, uh, live in Santa Clarita. Like Santa Clarita, for its schools and all that.
Worked someplace else.
But they work at least hour and a half away. And I think that slowly and steadily, we need to change that. We need to, we need to approach different businesses, whether it's biotech, whether it's technology, whether it's entertainment. Whether it's other services, to open the satellite offices here so that people can get good paying jobs. Not only jobs, but good paying jobs in the city. When people live in the city, people work in the city, I'll give my old.
Well, how do you do that? What, I mean, what, what measures would you take to bring these businesses out here, to bring these jobs out here?
First thing is you need to have a vision. Then you need to have experts that, you know what, who, who can approach those people. You have to sell yourself. You have to sell the city in a way that.
So you would actually go out and knock on doors?
Absolutely, I will. Once the COVID goes away, I'll do that literally. And we need to have faster internet for that. Lot of businesses will not start if the, if the internet is pathetic. And the cell phone coverage, I'm sure people have experienced, is super bad in Santa Clarita. You need to have these basic tools. Then you, if, even if you have to incentive, incentivize those people, you do give them incentives and let the businesses come here. We need businesses to come in Santa Clarita, good jobs to be in Santa Clarita. Only then we can sustain a population of four hundred thousand. Which will be the case in next three to four years.
What businesses would you particularly like to see come out here?
I think definitely uh biotech, much more, and uh, and, and a lot of technology businesses. I'm glad Amazon is coming, but my understanding is that it won't have a lot of high paying jobs. I need uh people, I need to have these sectors bring in more jobs with uh. With, with more, with better salary, so that we can, uh, we can help the people here. And also we'll attract uh more educated people uh in the community. But I think uh definitely biotech and technology will be the two big ones.
What about the homeless situation out here? What, what are your feelings on that? One of the reasons I think that, and I used to work for homeless shelters, so I'm a little, this is kind of a personal issue for me is. Uh, but um, a lot of, a lot of people. That I think for me, the frustrating thing is the, when they do the homeless count out here, it's, it's less than a thousand. That's a curable. Problem, you know, I mean, uh, but, you know, uh, Councilman Keller, for example. Seems to believe that if we have a, a full year round shelter, which I think they've since arranged to do, but. Or more affordable housing or whatever, that it's gonna be a magnet to attract homeless here. Tell me what you would do about homelessness.
Yes. Look, I was there at the homeless count, uh, which happened, I think, in late January or early February. And I teamed up with Ladish Kellat, actually, the, the social worker of the year last, last year. And uh, and he knows a lot about this too. And I have worked with homeless people. I have treated homeless people. I understand what issues go through. I've, I've seen people who are homeless and now they got the home. And I've seen people who had the home and have become homeless. Kind of know this issue inside out. It's a complicated problem. Whoever is saying that, oh, homelessness does not exist, I think they are lying or they are, they don't know.
I find that in most cases, they're just uneducated in the, in the issue.
And also when I see people who say that this issue can be sorted out very quickly, I think they also lack the. Lack the depth of the, of the subject. It's a multi-problem, multi-pronged problem. Uh, look, there are different reasons why people become homeless. Uh, number one reason is housing affordability. People think that it might be mental health, but no, it's, number one reason is housing affordability. Then certainly, you know, a lot of people go down the socioeconomic ladder because they get mentally sick and do not get the support. Lots of diseases like major depression, schizophrenia can make, can make you pretty poor very quickly. If, if that's the case and you're not getting treatment. Uh, de-addiction, I mean, addiction plays a role also, that people become homeless. And a lot of people are not trained well enough to get a good job and.
I'm gonna cut you off here because I, I, I know these issues. What, what is your solution?
What can we do? Okay. So there has, there has to be, there has to be a forum where you, where a person goes and. And talk to every single homeless person individually. You need to figure out a way that, okay, what is the specific core reason that this person has become homeless? But it would fall under these four categories, as, as we just talked about. You need to bolster all these four categories in such a manner that you solve the person's problem. But you also keep that system going so that, so that there is a sustainability to keep people out of homelessness. You do not want to solve the problem of eight hundred people and then eight hundred more people become homeless. You, they fall, they fall on, uh, in the cracks. If, again, if you have the right kind of leadership, if you have a person who understands these issues, then yes, with the resources. Use in a strategic manner, in collaboration with Los Angeles County, in collaboration with the religious institutes here. In collaboration with the community leaders here, people want to solve it. There are many good people, Steve, not only you, but a lot of good people here. Who would like to solve this problem. They just don't know what, what can they do.
Bridge to home a good solution?
Bridge to home is, is a good temporary solution, yes. You need to house the people there, but I think they have sixty beds.
But I mean, they also have a program where they try and move people into more permanent housing. So I mean, you know, I mean, it, it is, is part of the solution going, more funding to bridge to home? Or is it something outside of that, you think?
No, it has to be, it has to be both. You need to make sure that the, that the bridges to home keep on functioning well. You need, but you need to expand the services. But you need to, again, expand the services in such a manner. That you do not do it on a short term basis just for the optics, because if you solve the problem that way, then. Then three hundred or thousand more people will become homeless and then you are always chasing, chasing that situation. You need to have a solid basis as to what you're going to do. Can be done, need to make a, need, need to make a forum, involve good people. Apply your policies, this can be done. And it's not going to be super expensive.
All right, let me ask you about some just basic issues that, that come up on a, on a regular basis for people that. Have thought about running for city council. For example, uh, how do you feel about districting? Do you support that idea?
One hundred percent support it. Short answer to a short question. I've said that before, uh, when the city was going towards the districting. In fact, I was in the danger that I might be, for the lack of better term, districted out and I might not be able to run. Even then, I wrote to um, Ms. Tammy Murga in, in Signal. And I said that I think we should go district uh for the size of our city, for a better representation. For different sects of the society, uh, districting should be there.
What about term limits?
Definitely support it. Said that officially, two term limits.
Eight years.
Eight years, eight years, eight years straight. If people are good enough and they are voted back again. I've never, I've not made up my mind on that. But straight, eight years and, and then you have to say goodbye in a very good manner. But you get a cake and, and a coffee.
And a cheap gold watch. Yeah, okay, well, um, can, can I have you on, on your word right now? That you would be supporting, trying to do something about term limits for the city council?
Yes, yes, I, I, yes, it might, it, it definitely makes sense. I would like to convince people that, look. I think the vigor, the energy from a person, like for example, if I have that right now. In my opinion, maybe in eight years, somebody else has bigger and better and brighter ideas than me. Who can build on me or, or not. But I think in eight years, even if I win two terms, I'll say goodbye.
Okay, uh, and then.
Hire those people in the council in, in, in other ways, like you can have a, you can have a group. Look, experience counts. Even if, if you don't like somebody, they know the working, they know how the counties interact with each other and this and that. Seek, seek from them. Experience always counts.
Yeah, okay, um. One, one of the controversies or, or one of the things that's been brought up a lot lately is the issue with. The elections process itself for city council. Uh, each year we end up with, I think this is a record for the lowest number of people running uh for, for city council in the past. I don't know, six to eight years. And, cause usually it's up about thirteen to seventeen people. And what happens is you get the three to four incumbents who have all the name recognition and the money. And then all these other people dilute the vote. Because none, none of this, none of the city council has ever gotten a majority of the vote in the past, I think, six to eight years or whatever it is. Would you support the idea of a primary of some sort, you know, like the top four candidates move on to, you know, uh, an actual. General election kind of process, or would you?
I, I like it. I like it. I think the problem will get slightly better when we go district anyway. But I do believe that, yes, I think it's a, it's a challenge for me or for any other candidate. To get your name out in the whole city of three hundred thousand people. And incumbents definitely have an edge there. Also, when, you know, your posters and banners get, get stolen and. Turn away, uh, that, that makes it uh slightly more complicated. But that's a part and parcel of the game, I guess. Which, which a new person has to deal with. Uh, so yes.
You're a threat to somebody. That's what that means, if you're getting your sign stolen.
Hey, I, I sleep every night thinking that way.
Yeah, okay. Here's another quick question for you. I'm gonna pull Stephen Colbert on you. Bob Keller, the greatest city council person? Or just great city council person?
I don't know him much. Uh, he must have some good qualities that he, he remained there for twenty two years. He must have done some good for some people, some people in the city. I don't know him much, but I wish him a very happy retirement.
Okay, um, the, the, what, what, if you are elected. Tell me what is the first thing on your agenda? What is the first thing you wanna do?
It would be two things side by side. Uh, it's very difficult to keep one. I think you need to make sure that uh you educate the city in terms of the vaccination. Because that would be the time when the, it will be all there. You need to educate people, you need to tell them the objectives. Plus and minus, and I think my being doctor will definitely help me more. I'm not an infectious disease specialist, so, but I have a lot of friends. Who know the subject slightly more than me. I'll get them involved. At the same time. I, my priority will be to get our small business community back to, back to work. I think these two will be in the top of my agenda. And if I have to put a third one, then need to make sure that the kids' mental health is good. In terms of how they're dealing with this whole Corona situation. And then hopefully they can get back to the school in the safest, safest possible manner.
One of the things, um, I mean, we joked about at the beginning here that, uh, you know, you, you moved to a predominantly wide area again. Moslem Chathari ran for city council. I don't, I don't. I'm sorry?
Two thousand fourteen.
You, oh, you, okay, you, you know who he is.
I know who he is.
He, um, at one of the, um. Showcases or whatever you wanna call them, uh, the town hall meetings that they had, uh, that Moslem was there. Moslem's biggest thing was he wanted to create a multicultural center. And some woman, I, it just baffled me, but she, she stood up and said, we don't want your kind. Bringing that stuff here. Uh, Moslem has an accent. And, and you have an accent. So I'm, I'm just curious, have you experienced anything like that? And, and you run right now? I mean, any, any kind of attitude about the fact that you have an accent, that you're Indian and?
People say that my accent is cute. Yeah, I'm so glad that they, they, they do comment sometimes, but I, I have never, uh.
You haven't experienced any kind of racism?
Look, experience is two ways, right? Experience is that what somebody throws at you and what you take in. So I don't know, maybe people have thrown things at me, but somehow maybe I have not taken it that way. I always believed that I'm a, I'm a good guy and that's what people like to believe, that I am a good guy, so it doesn't. It, it hasn't affected me in that capacity. Talk about multicultural center. We do not have that plan, but I have mentioned in my, in my agenda that I like to have a youth center. Which would be kind of like that, but slightly more focused towards the youth, because I do believe that all the inclusiveness and. Or racism comes from, comes, usually people don't become racist at the age of twenty five, my point is. When, but when people from different parts of the community, different religion, different sects, they come and interact together when they are nine years old, eight years old. And then play chess together, uh, have a science assignment together, work on the debate together and then go and compete. Together as a team, usually, in my opinion, uh, when they grew up like that, then it. It does make systematically racism quite less. And again, you know, if somebody has a problem, get them on the table, talk to them. You might not be able to change that particular person, but a lot of other people will change your, change their opinion. If, if you are willing to sit and talk with them.
Okay, let's have a little fun. We're running out of time, so, um, this is a question from my kid. And he, his, his name is Ryan, he's, he's nine years old, and he wants to know very simply.
Hi, Dr. Akash. My dad says you are running for city council. What does a city council person do? What part of it do you want to do most?
What part, he said?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will tell Ryan, thank you for the question. A city council person tries to do what. Uh, what the, the congressman or the, or the president does for the country. Uh, we try to make sure that the roads are good. We try to make sure that the traffic is controlled. We try to make sure that the schools run safely and smoothly. We try to make sure that the kids have uh good education. Good scholarships, good opportunities, but at the same time have a lot of resources where they can have fun. And they can spend better quality time with their parents, because their parents uh can, can work hopefully. From the city and not outside the city. And what will I do best, buddy? I will run, I have a plan to create scholarship for the teachers and the students from my own pocket. And I would like to see each of you become the best possible person you can. Whether it's education or whether it's anything else.
All right, um. What's your favorite concert?
I watched Bon, John, Jon Bon Jovi. Yeah, the, my favorite song, if you have not asked me, but I have to say it, because that's the first time anybody's asked me, was Living on a Prayer.
Living on a Prayer? Okay, uh, favorite movie?
Favorite movie, um, you won't believe it, it's Kill Bill, actually.
Kill Bill?
Kill Bill Part Two.
You know what? I'm, I'm, I'll put that in my top ten any day. That, that, that whole thing where she breaks out of the coffin, being buried alive, just amazing. Just amazing, um.
The other one would be The Good, The Bad, The Ugly.
Okay, that's a great film too. Great film, good choices, good choices. Marvel or DC Comics? Do you know the difference?
I don't know the difference.
Well, DC is Superman, Batman, Wonder Woman. Marvel is Thor, Captain America, Spider-Man.
Than DC.
DC? Okay, all right. Are you a hunter or a gatherer?
Uh, I've never hunted in my life. So will that put me as a gatherer?
I, I suppose so. Uh, alive or dead, who would you most want to have dinner with?
Alive.
I mean, no, no, no. Who would you want to be? It doesn't matter who it is.
I thought we were having fun, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, okay.
I thought we were having a language barrier issue for a second.
I, I tried to cover it up, but, but that was difficult. Yes, um, alive. That's a tough one. I would say, I would say Barack Obama.
Barack Obama, okay. And a, a dead person. I mean, not if they, you could have dinner with somebody who's passed away.
Ronald Reagan.
Ronald Reagan, interesting, interesting choice. Um, any tattoos?
No tattoos.
If you're gonna get a tattoo, what would it be and where?
I think I will have a tattoo on my, on my wrist. Might be, might be my children's name.
Okay, all right. Uh, Star Trek or Star Wars?
Uh, Star Trek, actually.
Yeah, which one?
I cannot recollect, but overall.
All right, um, let's go back to our Bob Keller thing. Can you give me your best Bob Keller impersonation?
Oh, boy, come on, uh, I, again, I've not heard him enough, but, um. I'll, I'll say. I'll be retiring, I'll be retiring soon. And God bless America.
He'd actually, he usually does finish almost every little, little speech he does with, God bless America. Uh, and it always starts with, folks, let me tell you, um, and I need your best evil villain laugh.
I'm sorry, what's, uh, best evil laugh?
It's pretty good, pretty good. And do you have a joke for us?
Um. I, I read it actually, uh, uh, recently, uh, actually, um. Um, Jeff, uh, the joke said that it was said by Jeff Bush, I mean, George Bush.
Okay.
So I cannot authenticate that, but, but the joke was that, uh, somebody asked, um, uh, Bush that. What's the secret of your long and healthy, uh, marriage life?
Hmm.
And, uh, he said that we, uh, we go to dinner, uh, four times a week. So the person said, oh, that's, that's phenomenal, I mean, after that many years of, of marriage, you are still able to go, you know, four times a dinner. He said, yeah, it works out great, she goes on Monday and Wednesday, I go on Tuesday.
There you go, there you go, uh, well, uh, Dr. Akash, I'm gonna, Dr. Akash is the easiest way to call you, right, it's okay. I wish you much luck in the election, uh, vote November third, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, it's, um, just real quick, there, there are two city council seats open.
Yes.
Who is your favorite for the other seat, assuming you win?
Um, that's, that's again, a very tough call, if I, if I say name, uh, you know, uh.
You're endorsing.
Yeah.
I'm putting you on the spot, I know.
You are, you are, you are, I think, uh, I think whoever, um, has similar ideas to me.
Yeah.
Uh, would be, would be a great choice, but, uh, but certainly my favorite is Dr. Akash.
Very politically, uh, well stated here, all right, well, I do appreciate you taking the time to do this. Um, I wish you much luck in the election and, uh, maybe we'll have you back on again in the future, I hope so, certainly, certainly, uh, very interesting to talk to.
Stephen, all the best to you, your family and especially Ryan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You guys enjoyed the talk.
You've been listening to The Talk of Santa Clarita. Listen to us on iTunes, SoundCloud.com, YouTube and Stitcher. Barring a life event getting in the way, a new podcast is available every Tuesday. Questions, comments and show ideas can be sent to thetalkofsantacarita@gmail.com. You can also call or text us at six six one five oh five eight six seven two. That's six six one five oh five eight six seven two. Follow us on Twitter at the Talk of SC or on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube at the Talk of Santa Clarita. You can also visit our website by going to www dot thetalkofsantacarita dot com. This has been a production of Radio Free Santa Clarita Incorporated, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. To donate, go to radiofreesantacarita.org slash donate. Radio Free Santa Clarita, on the net and on the air, and we're very much aware.
Any questions?